WSRS FM Worcester and WSRS HD1 and iHeart Radio Station. Keeping you company on a Wednesday night. Did you have a good Mother's Day weekend last weekend? Judy is celebrating the fact that she is a mother. She is a mother to a miracle baby boy and his brothers, and she wants to just thank God for all the issues that her baby boy has overcome. We will hear from her next.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz. I'm the Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. On behalf of my colleagues and central office staff, I'd like to welcome you to our meeting of May 15th. Our meeting is broadcast live by Shrewsbury Media Connection and the work of John McDonald, and it will be rebroadcast between now and our next meeting on June 5th. First on the agenda is public participation. No one has asked to speak this evening, but if anybody should wish to do so in the future, please let the chairman know, and we will be happy to add you to the schedule. Next is Chairperson and Members' Report. Anybody? That's good. And next is Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. The...I wanted to recognize a couple of students at the high school in Class of 2020, Jack Foley and TJ Moore-Gera, who partnered with the 1540 Connection, a local charity that teaches people to detect cancer early to save lives, to hold what they called an "orange out." Orange is the cover of early detection for cancer fundraiser at the lacrosse game last Friday night in honor of Michael Bodge, who was a member of the high school class of 2009 who recently died after a battle with cancer. The leadership that Jack and TJ showed, and it's in conjunction with the project they were doing for their American Studies class at the high school, resulted in terrific crowd coming as well, who were engaged with a variety of things, raffles prizes, and also there was a whole table with educational information about early cancer detection. So, I really do appreciate the work of those two student leaders. Also, I'd like to mention this evening, I think I mentioned it last time, but tomorrow night, Thursday, May 16th, at 6:00 PM is the High School Art Show. The Visual Arts Department will have lots of displays in the largest commons at Shrewsbury High School, starting at 6 o'clock. If you can stop by, there's some amazing work there. Also, I want to congratulate all of the scholarship academic and athletic award winners who were recognized Tuesday evening at Shrewsbury High School. Some really remarkable students, outstanding achievements. Really appreciate the generosity of all of the donors who have contributed to scholarships for the senior class of 2019. I also want to recognize, and there was an excellent moment during the ceremony where Senior Suhas Jimanand has been appointed to the United States Air Force Academy. So, we congratulate Suhas on that outstanding achievement. And there was a Colonel from the Air Force who was a quite remarkable career, who was able to formally give him his appointment on that evening, which was terrific. Also, I'd like to mention that we have some students from Oak Middle School who participated in their state science fair. We're going to hear about our high school fair in a moment. And we had several third-place and honorable mentions, so congratulations to them and their advisor, Mr. Mullerella. And finally, this past Tuesday, or a week ago Tuesday, was our final early release day for professional development. Wanted to congratulate all of our faculty who completed their professional development pathways. We had a celebration of learning. There were a lot of the schools I visited, I was able to see a lot of great examples of the learning our staff had done during the year, which of course is invaluable to build capacity, you know, be...make sure that we are a learning organization, who's learning and growing and innovating and meeting our motto of empowering learners, not only meeting students, but also staff. And want to thank Ms. Clowder, as well as the Professional Development Committee for a job well done. We had a very strong program this year, I thought, as far as professional development, and that is Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you. First on the agenda this evening is student recognition, and we have two separate recognitions that we're going to go forward with. And the first is the State Science and Engineering Fair for high school students was held at MIT on May 3rd and 4th, and Student Garame Prakbacher, I hope I'm pronouncing your name right, you can correct me, received a first place for her project, "Increasing Exoplanetary Detection Accuracy Using Orbital Parameter Relations." I have no clue what that is. Welcome, along with Mr. David Riscosi, Director of Science and Technology at the high school. Welcome.
Thank you. So first, thank you so much for recognizing Garima's work, and I thought you would appreciate at least a little bit of an understanding of what it took for her to reach this level. So, we had about 50 students that competed in the science fair at the high school level, and that was in February. And we're only allowed to send 12 students to the regional fair. So, the top 12 students from the science fair at the high school advance to the regional fair. There's around 120 projects that are presented at the regional fair, and then they advance to the state fair. So, if you earn an award at the regional level, then you advance to the state. So, Garima was able to advance to the state fair, and there was 200 and...around 240 projects that were presented in the state fair. There are 17 first-place awards granted at the state fair, so Garima was one of those 17 awards. And I'll turn it over to her, so she could describe exactly what it was that she did.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you, first of all, to Dr. Sawyer and the school committee. I feel so honored to be here, to be one of the students to be here today. And I just wanted to, first of all, say thank you to all my teachers. My teachers have helped me since the beginning. When I was in sixth grade, I remember Mrs. Enos, who first introduced me to the concept of the scientific method, and then Dr. Rao from WPI, who mentored me through the eighth grade, introducing me to scientific literature presentation, and also just to approach every problem with an open and analytical mind. So, when I went to high school, I was thinking I was pretty much...this was pretty much routine, but my teachers and my mentors really helped me reevaluate my perspective. Ms. Palquin helped me understand the...more deeply understand the background behind my project, and Ms. Phillips really helped me put my infallible sense of procrastination to rest, and really focus on building a project with a solid foundation and an achievable goal. My mentor, Ms. Ficus, helped me understand that our conclusions should be made from fact, not what we wish was fact. And Mr. Riscosi helped me actually bring my whole science fair project in terms of logistics in a practical way. And I'm just so grateful to all my teachers and mentors for this. So, how my project actually worked was, exoplanets are planets outside the solar system, and the thing is, they're easy to detect, or relatively easy, but they're extremely hard to confirm, because like, there's so many other things that could look like an exoplanet, but it really isn't an exoplanet. So, that was the problem, and my goal was to make something that would make it easier, more accurate, and more efficient to find these exoplanets. So, what astronomers normally do is they take measurements from telescopes, and then they try to pick through the data and find where is our exoplanet. But I tried looking at it in a different way. So, instead of looking at our measurements, I tried to see what patterns there are in the measurements and what described those measurements. And then, once we found that, I was able to find some patterns and actually make an algorithm that could do this whole thing for us. And turns out, it works better than what we have.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Wow.
Wow.
We always sit here and say, we don't feel like we've done a lot with our lives. Any questions or comments?
We're speechless.
Yes.
This is incredible.
How...I'm just curious, how did that theory occur to you? What made you pursue that particular...
Well, weeks and weeks of research, because like, I spent so much time actually just looking for a topic in general, and I found this really interesting article about, not even about finding exoplanets, it was just about stars, which have like, sunspots that make it...that make all types of different noise. And I was like, I don't understand what's going on at all, so I'm going to see what's going on, and it actually turned into something way more interesting.
Excellent.
Lindsay. I'm in awe. But tell us, you must have had to partner with somebody to get the raw data, right, to analyze? And so, how did that come about? I'm guessing you don't have a telescope to measure all of these things. So, who did you partner with, and how did that happen?
Um, so, the good thing about the internet is that there's tons of public data.
It's out there. Okay.
Yeah, so there's a public archive, the NASA Exoplanet Archive, and I was able to get my data from that.
Awesome. Wonderful. I have a question. You mentioned WPI, and I know they have a lot of great programs for students in the summer. And are you involved in any of those types of summer programs or other programs there?
Um, no, I'm not, but I was mentored by Dr. Rao in eighth grade about...for my eighth grade science fair project, and I think that was a really like, enlightening experience.
Excellent. What grade are you in, may I ask?
I'm a sophomore.
A sophomore. Wow. Excellent. Good for you. Anything else?
Well, certainly want to congratulate you, Garima, in terms of the work that you've done on this. And I don't pretend to understand the ins and outs of it, and I do not showing us the algorithm and trying to explain it to us. But, the general sense is something that, when you see just the slide here, I think is excellent and talks about, you know, something you were curious about, you wanted to know more about it, then you decided, well, let's look at it from a different perspective, try something, and it turned out that it worked, which was great. And you tested it against what's already happening versus a control group. So, while this is a super sophisticated kind of project, this is an example of the kind of learning and the kind of approach that we're trying to teach our students to take to lots of different problems, whether those are problems in science, or mathematics, or in the humanities. That's...will serve you well. So, really appreciate it. And I guess my question for you is, do you think you're going to do more? And sometimes I know sometimes we've had students who have continued to do work with the same project and expand it over time. Do you have any plans to doing something with this next year? Or are you going to maybe think about something different, or...and as far as even plans beyond high school, is astronomy something, or astrophysics that you're interested in going into?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I've always been like, a space person, but this project is something I'm actually going to keep on going until the end of high school, because there's a lot of things I still need to improve on for this, and even with research, definitely.
Great.
Terrific. Well, at this time, if you'd like to come up and shake the committee's hands, we have a certificate of appreciation for you and recognition, and again, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Congratulations. Nice job.
Well done, Garima.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations. She's very impressive.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, our next student recognition is a science team from Shrewsbury High School on September, excuse me, Saturday, March 23rd. This team competed in the Massachusetts Science Olympiad at Framingham State University. Twenty students competed in events ranging from design and prototyping, to technical writing, to chemistry lab skills. Zachary Tajin is the SHS Science and Engineering Teacher, who is the Science Olympiad Advisor. And the students include Team Captain Ari Meeta Padong, Michelle Kim, and Sankeel Katinalu. And if everybody could come forward and have a seat, and we can hear about how much more we don't know. Welcome. And if you want to introduce yourselves, so everybody will know.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Zach Tajin. I'm the advisor for the Science Olympiad.
Hi, I'm Armita. I'm Shrewsbury High School Science Team's captain.
Hi, I'm Sankeel.
I'm Michelle.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, I'm the club advisor for this club, and what's great about this is it's all student-run, so I don't really get to do much. And I asked Armita to come tonight because Armita's the captain of the club, and she does everything. And this year, I've been so impressed with her ability to manage the Olympiad and the other competitions we have. So, I brought her, and she can explain what the Olympiad is, and then explain the two soon to one.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me today. I'm Armita, and so, I just wanted to quickly explain what Science Olympiad is. It's basically a statewide competition. Well, for us, we only participate in the statewide competition unless we move on to nationals. And it consists of 25 different events that range in topics from chemistry to biology to physics. And these events can be traditional testing events, so you sit down and take a paper test, or they can be lab events. There's building events, testing events, all sorts of...all sorts of different things. And normally, students choose two to four different events that they would like to do, and they compete in these over the weekend. And so, today, I wanted to introduce Sankeel and Michelle, and they won first place in mystery architecture, which was one of these 25 events.
So, for mystery architecture, a couple months ago, we were presented with this challenge. It was a trial event at Science Olympiad competition. We were given 30 seconds. We were pitched against 49 other teams from several schools. And with those 30 minutes we were given, we were given paper index cards, along with a few paper clips, and we were instructed to build the tallest tower that could hold a golf ball for three seconds.
Um, we didn't really do anything in particular to prepare for this event, but Armita, helpfully, beforehand, we did a lot of this kind of building with paper and stuff as our warmups for each science team meeting. And once we got to the actual event, it wasn't too difficult to figure out what our best strategy would be. We decided to build triangular prisms for our structures, and once we started building them, like stacking on top of each other, we figured that because it was such a flimsy structure, it would fall quickly. And then, so we doubled the amount of triangle prism for each level and added a piece of paper, so that the structure could shift, but it wouldn't fall. And that's kind of all we did, I suppose.
Excellent. Any questions or comments? I look at Lindsay, and we're again amazed.
I know. How...I'm sorry. You have 30 seconds to build it?
Thirty minutes, sorry.
Thirty minutes!
That's still super impressive. And how long did your golf ball stay? Just for the three seconds, or do you know if it stayed longer?
Um, it stayed for as long as we left it.
It was solid.
Yeah, and then we kicked it, and yeah.
Amazing. Very impressive.
Congratulations, first of all. And you said there's no preparation that goes into this. Did you get any insight into what you're going to walk into before?
Yeah, so, the events that you choose, you do prepare for. Some of these events are more spontaneous, like this one. You don't know what's coming. They basically give you a bunch of random materials and tell you to build something. But say for a different event, like anatomy and physiology, you would have to study three different body systems and take a test on those. There's like, lab events, like experimental design, where they give you materials and you have to design and experiment. So, different events require varying levels of preparation. So, this is one of the events that was more spontaneous, although we did do warmups that sort of mimic this. So, I think they were pretty well prepared.
Excellent. Thank you.
Is this the first year that you've competed as a group, or have you...have you done it before?
So, we have tryouts every year.
Okay.
Sankeel is a freshman, so this is his first year, but Michelle has done this before, and in middle school as well.
Yeah, I didn't do it last year. If I did in the middle school, then we'd have...
Yeah, in middle school.
Excellent. Congratulations. And I think it's interesting you did an architecture, because our architect is here for the Beal project, and Sean, I'm not sure.
How long would it take you to design a school for seven years?
And what would your price be?
Give you an hour.
Well, congratulations. It's so impressive. I mean, you're doing this above and beyond your regular academic work and everything else that you do, and I think it's gratifying for us to always see these types of presentations. So, thank you. Dr. Sawyer, any comments?
Well, congratulations. I'm really pleased that Armita was able to come, and I think that Mr. Tajin is really correct to talk about, you know, these clubs are not only about students competing, but it's also about organization, student leadership, and appreciate the leadership you've brought to the club to make it run and to be successful. As far as Michelle and Sankeel, I mean, just outstanding work. And, you know, to me, although I know you didn't prepare specifically for this, the fact that you were thinking about what kind of shape would work, and you're applying some of what you've learned in your mathematics classes through geometry, as well as, I'd imagine, some of your physics and other things you've done, both at the middle school level and the high school level, and to see this come together in an academic competition like this, and to do it so well, is really impressive. So, congratulations. We also have certificates for each of the three of you, so if you come up and shake people's hands. And again, well done. You can start right over here.
Yep, there you go.
Great job.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you. Thank you. Nice job.
Congratulations. Nice work.
Congratulations.
All right. Congratulations. Thanks for...congratulations. Nice work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Next on the agenda, we will have a design update. Mr. Sean Brennan, architect for Lamro Pagano and Associates, will provide an update on the Beal building project. I sit as the school committee's member on that, so I think this will be a very interesting visual you'll see at the progress that's been made to date. Welcome, Sean.
Thank you for having us this evening. I'm also joined here with Natalie Gabriel, who is also an architect on the Beal project in West. Sure, you've seen her at some meetings previously. Just got to get our presentation up here. So, once again, thank you for having us. It's kind of lots transpired since the last time we've seen you guys. Kind of going to give you a quick update. We officially own the land. I'm sure you already heard that. The deed signing was a great event. We've continued to have meetings with the district, with town officials, inspectional services, engineering department, everybody who's been involved, and it's been going great, further refining the design. Where we are right now is, we are currently assembling our 60% CD submission binder to MSBA. We're going to share a link to all those documents for you and the school building committee later this week. And simultaneously, right now, what's going on is Fontaine Brothers Construction is now on as the GC for the project. What we are doing is, we have a couple of early bid packages that are going along, and are outlined here with the schedule. So, like I just said, we're at the 60% construction documents right now, but 100% for the site documents are going out. And those site documents include the road realignment, rough grading, utilities, and then obviously taking down the existing barn and glaven proper buildings, which will happen in July. So, the next package we have coming out is in August, is we're going to have the full steel package going out with our 90%. But what they're doing is they're estimating out that site package right now. So, we're actually going to get some solid numbers to start to see what those costs are, and then they're going to estimate out like they had during all the other phases for the rest of the scope of work moving forward. And those numbers will be coming in at the end of this month. We have a reconciliation, and then we're going to be reporting at the next school building committee meeting what those prices are. Then, from there, we're still targeting the end of September for the full CD documents going out, and then they're hit the road from there, because the foundations will be in before the winter. They'll be swinging some steel over the winter, and we'll hopefully be looking forward to a topping off ceremony early spring, and we're still targeting the August 2021 occupancy. So, Natalie's going to kind of give you a quick update, well, more of a refresher, and then at the end, we have a video that we're going to kind of walk through and give you a sense of where the design is today.
Hello. So, yeah, I'm going to start with the site plan. The layout has essentially stayed the same from the beginning of the project, so we'll just kind of give an overview of that. We see the main parking area here in front of the building, and we're going to have play fields to the north, two playgrounds, and a paved play area at the south side with a lower entrance over here, and overflow lot here. The site plan shows the vehicular circulation that will happen on the site. The parent loop is with the blue arrows. You can see they'll enter the north entrance, which will be the main entrance into the site, loop around, and the drop-off pickup area will be at the lower level here. This is the paved play area again, and they'll turn around and come back. We wanted to keep the bus loop separate from that for simplicity and flow, and so the buses will come in here from the south entrance and be able to pull right up to this main entry here. Oh, I forgot to mention, though, we don't have that here. So, the lake street realignment is illustrated on the site plan, so the current lake street kind of comes up a little bit more here. Just cut off a little bit. This slide is showing just, what do you call it? Event parking, event flow, which will happen. So, this will be, this whole loop road will be open to, for cars to flow through. We have parallel parking along this loop here for extra parking, and this paved play area will also have overflow parking availability. So, that's just illustrating that. We wanted to show the overall layout of the building, which has also kind of stayed essentially similar to what we've had since the beginning, but we wanted to illustrate how the core spaces are centralized around this main lobby here. This is the first floor. This is the ground level, so when you enter the building, you're entering at the upper, kind of like an upper level, and it steps down the hill of the site towards the back, which you can kind of see here in this section. So, we have the core spaces here, and the academic wings radiate off of that, and we wanted to keep this short distance, short walking distance for the smaller kids to the core spaces. That was one of our original goals of the project. At the lower level, you can see the media center and art rooms are also in the center, off of sort of this lower lobby. You can see the lower entrance here, which comes right into the lower lobby. And these here are the common areas. So, we have seven neighborhoods, and each...so, this is a neighborhood, and this is a neighborhood. So, each neighborhood will have its own common area, like Sherwood Middle School, which was another important aspect of the project. So, it kind of makes it a school within a school, gives it a smaller feel for the littler kids. And just to like, recap, this is, will be the cafeteria coming into the main entrance. We have the music rooms, the gym in blue, and then the administrative offices here. And this image is showing a section cut through the main lobby, looking south. And this image is showing a section cut through the main lobby, looking south towards the soccer fields. So when you're looking this direction, you will come in and you'll immediately see the cafeteria to your left, um, which has a nice view out to the soccer fields through this, some glass. And then, um, this corridor leads to the music rooms and you come down the main stair to the media center, which also incorporates a maker space in that area, um, which is within the media center, but kind of partitioned off a little bit. So that's, um, a nice part of the plan as well. And, um, one other thing we wanted to mention was, um, we're, we've been developing this lobby as sort of a main focus of the project with kind of this L form coming through and unifying, unifying all of the core spaces. And we're developing, um, sort of some image of nature, we've kinda landed on this tree image for now. Um, but wanted to bring in these interior exterior connections with some wood materials, um, an image of nature that unifies all of these niches that we have throughout all of these, um, that kinda unify all of these main core spaces. So that's a big aspect of the project. Um, quickly, just looking north, um, if you're looking section cut through the lobby again, we just wanted to illustrate how when you come in, you come into the main vestibule, um, during the day after drop-off, we will direct the flow of visitors through that main office, um, for security purposes. Um, as you come through, you see the corridor to the administrative offices and conference rooms. Um, there's also an exit out this way to the play fields, um, to the north and playground. And then you come to the gym entrance, as well as the main display case. So we have this unifying element that kind of organizes these elements on this wall. Um, again, we're bringing in the exterior materials into this side of the lobby, um, brick and brick here. Um, also, the, the materials will be very durable, which is another thing we are trying to achieve. Um, and then as you come through this main lobby, you end with the corridor that leads to the kindergarten wing, um, and another entrance to the gym. Also a two-story space here, just wanted to illustrate the, the views to the media center, um, which also you can see out to the west, um, where there are very nice views actually, and a, a little garden grove area behind the butterfly grove, which is very nice, um, that you can see out from the media center. Um, oh, I'm sorry, so Sean was going to, um, I didn't realize I was gonna start right away, sorry about that.
No worries.
Um, so we've developed this nice walkthrough animation of the building that Sean's gonna narrate for you and kind of describe the building a little bit more.
So the, um, this is gonna kinda look a little polished, look a little final, but don't, don't, don't get too worried. This is still sixty percent CDs, we are still looking at things, we're still developing them. Um, some of the default materials are gray, don't think we're just gonna go with gray. But we're really trying to just give you a good sense of how the approach to this building is gonna feel for these students. What type of, you know, inspiration and emotion we're trying to invoke in these children. And one thing we were really focused on during this phase was really the entry approach, the canopy. Um, we have quite a big canopy we're trying to deal with here. Um, and what we wanted to do was choose a material that was gonna allow some light in, um, so it wouldn't feel like you're in too much of a tunnel and you'll, you'll start to see that and you'll start to see some of the other things Natalie had mentioned, um, during her presentation. So, um, as you see here, this is kind of the core spaces with that large unifying element, the paved play area. Here the academic wings come off. Here's where the raised garden beds are gonna be also handicap accessible and accessible to normal students that each of the grade levels will have. All the wings culminate in the egress stair and a nice window for the common rooms. We have the butterfly grove. There's a lot of kind of dual use for bio-retention swales, water management mitigation, mixed in with the landscaping. You're seeing the kindergarten, uh, playground area there. So here we are, we're coming around, so now the, the parking area is terraced and it terraces down to try to kind of seat it in there and block out a lot of the cars while they're being parked there in the day. There is gonna be some delineation of where people will be walking as they come in. You're starting to see this lighter area material that's gonna let some light in, so as these students approach. Uh, during the day, they'll be able to just walk right through the vestibule into the main lobby here as you're starting to get a glimpse of that large ceiling just carrying right through that whole element. You turn to the left, the wist of glass there is the same size as the wist of glass at the end, looking out towards the Shrewsbury youth soccer fields. Uh, survey lines here on the left. Once again, trying to bring in some of those wood features, it's not actually wood, it's wood look. We're looking still at some very durable, cleanable materials that are gonna last you guys a long time. You saw the persennium there on the stage, has kind of a really nice thrust that even if the, it's partitioned off and used as a classroom at other times, you still have enough for even to have the, probably the chorus just in front of that, um, wall there. As you see here, we're approaching into the gym, uh, just as a point of note, same size as Floral Street, same size court as Floral Street, leechers to one side, uh, you know, simple articulation. We have some windows to the north, which is nice, you're never gonna really have to fight any harsh east or west or southern sun coming into that space. And then as you're coming back out here, you're starting to see that tree motif. And it was this kind of, you got a glimpse of it, the glimmer of it. An earlier concept was this kind of tree house for learning, is something we're really trying to carry in. And, and not only, I mean, you don't have too many sites like this in, in town where it, it's, even though the Gladden Center's been there, when you're in that kind of bowl looking towards the southern fields, you really feel like you're back on this farm road, like, like it was back when it was. So here you see the main stair, freestanding stair, we have an L seat bench, some student display cases built in, the graphic wraps around, spills into the media center, the maker space is back here. And then this is the view that's gonna be out over Lake Quinsig, looking over towards UMass, um, Worcester Hills there. Um, if the lights were down a little bit lower, this would be a, a little more profound. But, um, we, we'll definitely share this with you, for distribution. And as we look back, you're starting to see that continuity of this element that you also saw as a beacon in the front. You also have that kind of beacon in the back. Um, direct access off of the media center to this area that we're referring to as the butterfly grove, art rooms on the side. Um, so, yeah, can always play it again, you can take any questions you have. Um, but, yeah, that's, that's what we have for you today.
Any questions or comments?
It's just great. It's nice to see the progress.
I'm, I'm intrigued by the concept of the tree, I'm not gonna lie. Actually, when I was looking at it in our meeting materials, I, I actually thought it was an image of the tree to show scale. Um, and I was kinda confused, but so i- is it, that would be an image that would be on the interior wall of the main shared space?
Yes.
Would that be like a painting, how, how?
So the, the, whatever, so it was interesting, we had, we talked kinda at length about this and, and how to articulate it. You know, should it be abstracted, should it not be abstracted? Uh, should be, you know, realistic, but ultimately, the application we're looking at is, um, you can actually have plastic laminate printed with a photo. So we break it up panelized and it has a really thick wear layer on it, so it's something that you could clean, kids could bang into. And it's not like the melamine plastic laminate everyone else thinks of. This is, this is like commercial grade, um, you know, some people cringe when they hear that term, but it's nothing of that nature. And the banding around it would also have like a three millimeter banding on the edges. Um, but that is kinda how we were hoping to capture that in that recess. But the tree motif, what was happening is we were trying to find something that could span two levels and outwards. And, and also something that would have some level of intrigue to make you wanna walk further down this lobby that we have going on. Um, and we studied a lot of different options, you know, even something a little more, almost like the hill there at Gladden with the tree maybe just at the top or more of a scene. And, and none felt really as cohesive or as striking as the image that we chose, um, currently going with. And, and that's why we came with it as a recommendation, um, to, to kind of the steering committee that's been assembled, um, between town facilities department and the school department to take a look at it. Like I said, sixty percent's not set in stone, but it's, it's always good to get everyone's feedback and reaction to it.
Thank you.
Sean.
Just a quick question, the reference to Maker Space, can you explain that a little bit, like what that is?
Yeah, so, um, obviously, project-based learning, um, you may, may or may not recall, the educational program that was written for this school received great accolades from all of the reviewers at the state level. D E S E, Terry Kwan, who actually spearheads the science app, uh, kind of administration of science programs at, for MSBA and the MSBA reviewers themselves. Um, so ultimately, it's gonna be a space for, for much what you saw some of the students were talking about earlier today, prototyping, uh, lab space. Uh, it's gonna have, uh, potentially a three D printer is something we're looking at at this point. Um, and just a lot of storage and, and area for kids to kinda get messy, do things, you know, not, it's, it's kind of a confined area. And the thing that struck MSBA the most about it was that it's gonna be in the library. What happens oftentimes is these spaces are somewhere else in the school and they kinda end up turning into a dumping ground or they get abandoned and they're not used. The great thing here is it's, it's gonna be highly visible in the media center.
Right.
And, and the upkeep and having that, you know, person there to oversee it, there's, there's direct access off of the corridor.
It makes sense, I remember, I mean, we've been in Sherwood a lot lately and, uh, they have the three D printers in, in the Maker Space.
Yeah.
I appreciate the description. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, you, you, maybe Ms. Carter could also comment on that, she, she and her team have done a lot of planning around that particular space, just to amplify that.
If you've seen the space in, uh, it Sherwood, that's kind of added on to that really kind of nice little bump out L. We wanted to design something with intentionality that would allow kids to explore something in depth, um, with the classroom teacher or within the media center, because some of our forays into three D printing and robotics have happened actually during the media classrooms. Um, and so we have kind of a dual-use space. And, um, one of the key considerations was how we would balance, um, the need to do some exploring and kind of STEM engineering, uh, but also allow for storage so that it didn't clutter the classrooms. Um, and, and so those things kinda drove the design. And then we had a lot of discussion about how much space was necessary, how many kids we were trying to fit in there, and how we would balance kind of the demands of the media space. So the proximity of the art rooms is also by design, because we imagine we're going to use one and a half of the art room. So we have overflow, so that if we wanted to have two things happening simultaneously, we'd also be looking at, you know, you, people talk about STEM education, but they also talk about STEAM, because we really should integrate art into this too. Um, and our art department has really been at the fore in looking at some project-based learning modules, so that's, that's the context.
Thank you.
Lindsay? Just one question, the, um, the model shows, um, that paved parking space with some cars in it, but is the parking lot designed such that on a typical school day, not a special event, that, that would accommodate sta- traditional staff and that would be empty, or is the thought that teachers would also, or staff?
So just, just for clarity, um, I'm, I'm gonna.
I realize it's a model, we see the same guy over and over again.
Yeah, no, 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 I just, just to, to kind of point out, the, so this is the paved play area and then the parking lot up here. So this parking lot up here, uh, is, um, a hundred and thirty-five spaces, I believe. So we were targeting a hu- like a hundred fifteen, a hundred and twenty for staff.
Okay.
And then we were targeting the rest that were in that for visitors. So, so just the main parking lot area that's terraced up can serve day-to-day.
Day-to-day, perfect.
Then the one that is out of sight here, that's actually on the lower, kinda across the ring road, that is purely kinda overflow. Or, you know, just kinda administration decides they wanna make a little more room out front, they could have some staff mark over there. But this, this paved play area is, the only time during the days is drop-off and pickup. Much like you have at a lot of your other schools at Patton, at Floral, you know, the stu- parents are there early. But luckily, we actually built in this additional ring road to anticipate those early parents coming, as we can, can kinda deal with them and, and keep them off the main road. Um, and, and be able to have them come in and they'll come in, circulate around. So, yeah, this, this was just kinda sense of scale.
It's a beautiful and thoughtful design, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I think it's amazing to see, you know, we've been talking about Beal for years. John, I was just talking about, you know, a year ago, we were looking at charts with little colored dots on them. And now we're seeing this, you know, the academic program in a building that's aesthetically beautiful. And, you know, again, it's only sixty percent, it may change in some way, but I think it meets the needs of the district. Um, I think having Lamro Pagano, somebody who's worked with us before, you understand. And I know nothing about this and being part of this building committee has really been fascinating to see how this all works. But this is, I think when people see this, that they'll just be very, very happy with where this is going. I do have one question after, um, our meeting last night. What level it will the kindergarten be on? That first, or is it, are they in the, somebody asked?
Yeah, if we, um, I think it might actually help to see it in the three D view a little bit too. Um, so the kindergarten are off the main lo- so as we were talking, you come in the main level, for all intents and purposes, the building's a two-story building, but when it reads as kind of a one-story here. The kindergarten are here, so they're gonna have direct grade egress out this playground area.
That was the exact question they were asking, yeah.
So, so they definitely have, you know, obviously an emergency, depending on where it's happening. You know, there are, is this wing out here, their state closest stair is this stair to go down one flight, you know. But, you know, if, if it allows, they can easily have great access out that way. I mean, it's fifty-fifty, so, um, obviously, if you have someone that you're concerned about, you can have them assigned to the wing that has the best grade access.
Thank you. Dr. Sawyer?
Well, I wanna thank, uh, LPA for the excellent work they've done, uh, and the, the, as we all know, the, you did this form follows function and they've taken the educational plan and they've designed, uh, a building that I think is gonna work extremely well for the educational program. Uh, and, and as is typical for the projects they've done for, uh, the school district in the town of Shrewsbury, um, it looks, uh, very classy, it's, it's got a nice feel to it. Um, I do apologize, I think that bulb is not working particularly well on the, on the projector, the colors will. But also, I know that, um, Ms. Crockett the other night indicated that some of the three D pieces, that the colors haven't quite been selected yet. Some of them are just in some neutral tones right now, um, and the interiors, it will look, it will definitely have more, uh, of a, uh, color palette once, uh, further design work is done. Uh, but I think in terms of it being, you know, one of the things that from the very start, uh, which I know has, has worked well at Floral Street and has worked well at Sherwood, both designed by LPA, um, is that we wanna make what's a very large school, especially for this age group, feel smaller. Um, so you have that real sense of, of community feel in the main section, but then as you get out into the classroom wings, um, in the neighborhoods, it's going to feel very, much more manageable, I think there's a very natural flow to it. Um, and, uh, you know, so far, so good. I think that right now, we're getting a sense of some of the, uh, like the design itself, we think it's working really well. Some of the, you know, the decor pieces will, will, in terms of shapes and prints and all those kinds of things, I think we have to have some more conversation around what, uh, we think is gonna work for the long term. But I, I really appreciate the thinking relative to a motif and thinking about, you know, how this is going to be, uh, a, a, a striking place for, for learning, uh, for kids. So it's, uh, um, you know, we're, we're very pleased with what's happening. Uh, so, uh, and we look forward to continue to work together to, to keep moving it forward. And I think right now, you know, as far as the logistics, the timeline, we're in really good shape. We're really pleased with Fontaine Brothers and them coming on board, uh, at this point and, and working collaboratively with LPA, um, so that we can, uh, uh, make sure that we get the, the project at the, that's the most cost-effective, uh, as, as it can be. And that's something that I'm, I'm confident we'll be able to do. So again, thank you, we really appreciate the, the work.
Well, the only other thing I'd add that, um, kind of the Fontaine reported on when we met with the school building committee is that they're gonna be mobilizing in, in June, so you're gonna start to see some activity. They're gonna get some trailers out there, they're gonna start fencing off the property. And then we're looking at mid to late July, when you'll start to see some demolition happening. So it's just kinda good to let the community know that, you know, it's, it's, you can start to see a presence.
Yeah, great, thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is under finance and operations, Mr. Collins will give us an update on state aid.
Okay, I have a presentation for you this evening that I just wanted to go through. Take a minute to call it up.
It's down in the dock there.
Okay, so we're at that point, uh, in the budget process, lengthy budget process, um, where we do have, uh, a little bit more information relative to, uh, state aid. So I'm gonna cover kind of three major topics, which are some of the categories of funding of state aid, uh, for Massachusetts school districts, including Shrewsbury, some historical data, and then a, a timeline, uh, towards the completion of the fiscal twenty budget process. So, uh, first, uh, put this into kind of three, uh, major categories. Um, first is chapter seventy-eight, um, second is reimbursement programs, including special education, charter schools, non-resident vocational transportation, and then finally, grants for targeted needs. And first and foremost, uh, chapter seventy-eight, which plays a, a large role in financing, uh, public education. And this is just a, a, again, kind of a reminder that, uh, you know, back with education reform in the early nineteen nineties, it was determined through, uh, some court cases that for sure, that the state has a constitutional responsibility uh, to ensure an adequate and equitable, uh, education for all public school students. And as a result, uh, they have. And as a result, uh, they have some financial skin in the game on that, to make sure it is both adequate and equitable. Uh, so there was a complex formula that was devised to ensure uh that the distribution of their funds helped go towards fulfilling those goals of providing adequate and equitable education. And it is complex. I'm not gonna go through any kind of formula stuff uh this evening. Uh, and the formula has changed uh over that time span as well, and there's been some significant changes to it. And finally, the other bullet point that I just wanted to highlight is, you know, the so-called chapter seventy-eight or state aid uh for education is a general fund receipt. So the school department doesn't have bank accounts. You know, all of this funding goes to the town treasurer's office. And um, you know, it is a has to be appropriated uh at the annual town meeting, which we're looking at for next week. And so it is a so-called general fund receipt. It's not a grant that just the school department or school committee or uh school administration has control over. It's a so-called general fund receipt. It has to be appropriated uh each and every year. So a little bit of history around the funding level, uh going back to just fiscal twelve, just to fit it on a chart here, was eighteen point five million dollars at that point. And you can see some annual increments on this uh scale, which of course starts at seventeen and a half million. And uh so the current year up to this year, uh how much funding are we getting for education through this program, chapter seventy-eight? Well, we're getting nineteen million eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So it's a significant sum. It's an important revenue source uh for the town and for public education. And it has stepped up each and every year. But in the context of our overall annual appropriation, you can see that it looks in this chart much more like a flat line. The blue line, the chapter seventy, and in that time span from fourteen to twenty, it's increased six point two percent. At the same time, the amount of local funding towards the town appropriation uh has grown thirty-nine point five percent. So uh it's certainly kind of leveled off with respect to uh state aid. And you can see the little bump up in the red area, red or orange, however it's showing here on the slide. In fiscal fifteen was the year of the operational override, and you can see that bump up of uh local funding. And then kind of just a steady uh increase thereafter. So that's the pressure that we face each and every year. Um, you know, we have a rising appropriation uh operating budget. And uh in the context of our overall sixty-six point three million dollar budget, you know, state aid looks pretty flat. So what are we looking at for fiscal twenty? The yellow bar there is, again, the nineteen point eight million dollars. That's our current year. And then uh as the state budget progresses through uh from the governor's initial budget in January to uh the House Ways and Means budget, to the House budget, to Senate Ways and Means, there's all these different iterations of the state budget process. That's what these blue bars are. And each each one of them um has their own particular appropriation that they're recommending. And so you can see that the governor's budget in January was just about twenty million dollars of chapter seventy-eight for Shrewsbury. And then the House Ways and Means budget, actually, the the House approved the budget, and the Senate Ways and Means budget, which is in the far right, all has the same amount of chapter seventy-eight, uh, which is uh just about sixty thousand dollars more than the governor's budget. So that's a looking like a pretty solid estimate at this point, is twenty million dollars, sixty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars. Couple other aspects of how this program works is, excuse me, that we are uh one of one hundred and eighty-three communities that receive so-called minimum aid. And that is uh comes in the form of usu- usually an amount per pupil, a dollar amount per pupil. And in the governor's budget, uh what he had recommended was twenty dollars for the year for each pupil that the the school district had. And uh the legislature actually increased that uh to thirty dollars uh per pupil. Or uh so for new dollars for Shrewsbury, uh would be a hundred and eighty-one thousand two hundred and ninety dollars in new aid above and beyond the current year. And basically, what they do is they look at what's called the foundation enrollment. Uh, there's a lag time around enrollment, um, meaning that they have to look at what we reported and all school districts reported back in October first. That's the official enrollment count for all school districts. And so they're using an October first, twenty eighteen enrollment figure to calculate fiscal twenty, um, chapter seventy-eight. And that's just the way that the program works, because you need to have hard data in order to develop all of these complex formulas and publish information and have something to work off. Another interesting fact is that for Shrewsbury, since we have a tuition-based full-day kindergarten program, that for the foundation enrollment, if you have a student, uh, you know, Johnny Jones is going to Beal School and his parents are paying tuition, we know that he's there full-time or one point O F T E. But for foundation enrollment purposes, Johnny Jones is counted as a half of a student or point five. And so instead of getting thirty dollars for Johnny Jones, we get fifteen dollars, uh because the tuition that the parents are paying are financing the other half of the education. The state doesn't participate in that. So just an interesting fact that if we did have tuition-free full-day kindergarten, right now, all of our students, that next year's aid uh would have increased by four thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars, uh because we would have got the additional fifteen dollars per student. One of the myths that I think is uh out there with respect to uh chapter seventy-eight is this notion that uh, you know, the actual amount of money that a community spends on its education impacts uh the amount of aid that we get, that there's there's somehow a direct correlation and there's not. Uh, the the chapter seventy formula is, it's basically a calculation to determine a minimum spending level, called the foundation budget. And it's a calculation to ensure that those districts are spending at the minimum, but then also determining the allocation of how much is required locally, and then as a result, how much chapter seventy-eight a community will get. So it's a it's a calculated piece. It's uh somewhat theoretical, if you will, but that's how chapter seventy-eight is calculated. And then school districts spend what they decide to spend. Each community decides locally through their school budgeting process and annual town meetings what what they're gonna actually spend. But what they actually spend doesn't impact how much aid a community gets. So I wanted to decouple that, uh because that I think might be a myth uh that is out there. And, you know, this is one of the things that I in this middle bullet point here that uh, you know, with respect to the foundation budget of the minimum spending level, that on a statewide basis, that collectively, all school districts spend twenty-five point seven percent more than that statewide minimum. And at the same time, uh and this is for fiscal eighteen, Shrewsbury spent only eighteen point four percent above our minimum foundation. Uh, but you can see that this idea of having this uh foundation budget or spending floor, uh and then what school districts are actually spending so much more above that, in that this this is the mechanism for distributing aid, that this is really the rationale and the call for educators across the state and legislators to adjust the foundation through this Foundation Budget Review Commission and say, you know, this really isn't reflecting reality. Uh, it's an older formula. There's some implicit assumptions in there that haven't kept up with the real cost of education. And so therefore, we want to change the foundation budget. And many of those things are being incorporated and phased in over the next six or seven years. So that's chapter seventy-eight. Uh, just shifting gears a little bit to uh special education circuit breaker. This is a wholly different type of state aid program. This is one that provides uh some relief, if you will, for high-cost special need students. And basically, the mechan- mechanism in place is is that um excluding transportation, that for students whose services to to uh provide educational services to a special need student, whether they're in an out-of-district placement that might cost two hundred thousand dollars, or if they're still in district and they have a one-to-one special education aid and some speech and language services and occupational therapy, and all of those services might collectively cost, say, sixty thousand dollars. That um, once those costs for that child exceed forty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars, or four times foundation, then the state will reimburse up to seventy-five percent of the dollars after that threshold. Subject to annual appropriation. That's underlined, underscored, because this program, again, is funded by the state. And the amount that the state puts into the pot to provide this distribution of circuit breaker to all the communities, that amount varies based upon the legislative process. Uh, so it's been uh pretty, pretty uh close to that seventy-five percent. I'll show you some information in in a few minutes, another slide. Uh, but again, the mechanism is 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 very detailed reporting by all school districts each July. So this this coming July, uh the Special Education Office will be filling out a state uh template, cost uh template, to identify students who exceeded that threshold and uh submit it in July, just like every other school district for the for the year that we're just finishing. And we haven't finished it yet, of course. Uh, but they'll fill that out in July, and then that will be the basis for uh a reimbursement for fiscal twenty. Uh, so as a result of that, uh basically, what I have to do along with the Special Education Office is make some estimates. What are the what do we think the costs are going to be, first of all, for this year, for each of those students? And then secondly, what do we think the state's going to appropriate for the upcoming year? Uh, and then how's that gonna translate into a reimbursement rate? So that creates some uncertainty uh in your budgeting process. So what have been uh the reimbursements uh for Shrewsbury? Uh, you can see uh in basically two charts here or two different uh data elements. First is the bar chart shows the reimbursement percentage, which again, in recent years, back to fiscal thirteen, has been close to seventy-five percent. Hasn't reached it in every year, but it's been pretty close. So it's between seventy-two and seventy-five percent. And then the dollar amounts, you can see escalated from thirteen to a peak in uh fiscal seventeen, uh just over three point four million dollars, and then starting to trail off a little bit. Uh, the percentages are going down. Reimbursement percentages are going down a little bit. Uh, but also, as your costs go down, your reimbursement amount's gonna go down, because it's a reimbursement program. So again, if you had no students that met this threshold, you'd get no reimbursement. So shifting gears now to another aid program for charter schools. Uh, there is a separate reimbursement program for communities who have students who are attending attending a charter school uh to provide some some measure of financial relief. The formula is based upon enrollment. You're sending enrollment to charter schools. Again, the amount that uh is distributed by the state is appropriated on an annual basis and has changed in terms of the formula and how they do it. They've had a couple of different mechanisms uh in terms of how they do it. We do get some estimates about what uh is has been incorporated to the state budget process through the so-called cherry sheet, which I included in your uh school committee packet as one of the uh reference documents in an appendix, so you can see there how uh the state budget pro- progresses and what uh the reimbursement level looks like for charter school aid. And again, charter school aid is a general fund receipt, uh goes right to the town treasurer and to the town coffers. So what's been our experience? This, I just grabbed this off a Department of Ed website, and you can see, uh this goes back to fiscal ten and then to the current year fiscal nineteen, and shows enrollment at the top. Uh, so for example, that the peak was in fiscal eleven, we had a hundred and forty-four charter school students. We were responsible as a community for paying one point three two million dollars in tuition to finance those children in those charter schools. The state provided four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in reimbursement to help offset those costs. So the community's net cost was eight hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And then the net cost, actually, because of the reimbursement formula, again, there's kind of some complications with that. Our our net costs uh from this chart peaked out in fiscal thirteen at uh just about uh one point one million dollars that we were paying. So fortunately, now, in fiscal nineteen, to the far right, we're looking at twenty-eight students instead of a hundred and forty-four, tuition amount of four hundred and three thousand dollars, pretty small amount of reimbursement of about twenty-five thousand. So the net cost this year is three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. So charter schools certainly do have very large financial impact on uh school community, uh school districts in their in their communities. Uh, so the projection for fiscal twenty, again, you've got two different budgets here, the House budget and then the Senate Ways and Means budget. You know, they're they're pretty close, but uh it looks like a net cost of somewhere between three hundred and eighty-seven and four hundred thousand dollars to the community. And this is something that Mr. Mizikar, of course, incorporates into his overall budget planning. Uh, the next category is uh some transportation-related items. Uh, the first one is non-resident vocational transportation. And first and foremost, uh we as a school district and a community are required to provide transportation to our students who attend Asmit Valley Vocational High School in Marlboro. And per the state law, we cannot charge a fee uh to those students uh for that service. Uh, this year, we're operating uh three buses at a total cost of just over two hundred thousand dollars for transportation. And again, when there is reimbursement, and I'll show you uh some information in a minute, that when there is reimbursement for this program, it again is a general fund uh receipt that goes right to the town coffers. Uh, another program that is out there with respect to transportation reimbursement from the state is homeless student transportation reimbursement. Uh, again, we are required to uh provide transportation to students who uh have lived in Shrewsbury at one point, then become displaced and homeless. They could be living in Worcester, for example, uh temporarily in a homeless situation. They have a right to return back to their home school in Shrewsbury, and we are required to provide transportation, pick them up in Worcester each day, and bring them back to their uh school of origin. Right now, and this this population fluctuates during the year. As you can imagine, as family situations change, uh the latest information I had was we had fourteen homeless students that we were transporting. So again, it it varies. It's very unpredictable. And again, it's a it's a general fund receipt, and we do get some uh reimbursement. So combined, I just put these two uh reimbursement programs on the same chart here, from fiscal thirteen uh to nineteen. Um, and you can see the amounts have varied uh pretty significantly. Homeless transportation. I know that the the, we had in Shrewsbury, pretty significant homeless population. In fiscal thirteen, we had a hundred thousand dollars in reimbursement that year. Uh, but there was also a ninety-four percent reimbursement rate. If you flash forward to fiscal nineteen, uh I'm just projecting that we're gonna have a twelve thousand dollar reimbursement amount, and that the reimbursement rate in recent years has been, you know, more in the thirties, mid-thirty percent range. Again, that's based upon annual appropriation from the state. And then non-resident vocational transportation, huge fluctuations from fiscal fourteen, where there was eighty-nine thousand, almost ninety thousand dollars coming in, eighty-seven percent reimbursement rate. And then the next year, there was nothing. So that's how it fluctuates. And right now, um, in fiscal twenty, there's nothing in the budget for non-resident vocational transportation. State Representative Hannah Kane has been a real champion to try to help us secure uh reimbursement for this. Uh, so we'll see what happens in fiscal twenty if if uh we can get some reimbursement there. But right now, there's nothing in the budget. And on homeless, we're expecting probably about thirty percent reimbursement rate. And then finally, uh the the timeline, um, again, you know, we're gonna have our annual town meeting next, starting next Monday in the state budget process, and all of their allocations of funding and appropriations won't be done until you know, a month and a half later. So uh there's estimating involved here uh all along the way. And that's why this, you know, the cherry sheet comes in very handy with respect to estimates. estimates and, uh, where the state budget process is playing out. So, that is an update in terms of where we stand on some of the state aid programs, and happy to respond to any questions that, uh, committee might have.
Any questions or comments, Dale?
So, this was an interesting presentation. If I understand this correctly, uh, chapter seventy is kind of the highest profile reimbursement we get from the state. And so all eyes are on that, and, and they're giving us twenty dollars or whatever more per head. Uh, but it looks like there are other sources of state funding, for example, the non-resident vocational, or the McKinney-Bento, or whatever, that we depend upon them, uh, for also. And it looks like the fluctuations, or even the cuts that have occurred in there, may equal or exceed any increases they give us in the per-head amount at chapter seventy. So we may hear that we're getting an extra eighty thousand dollars or whatever in chapter seventy-eight, but then if vocational transportation goes away, or McKinney-Bento, or whatever, uh, that may disappear.
It's true. Yep, absolutely. Yep, and, uh, you know, we work closely with Mr. Mizikar through the budgeting process, um, to, you know, try to help provide the best information, uh, that we might have, um, respect to, uh, current year costs, 'cause a lot of these reimbursement programs look at the prior year, so we'll talk to him about what's happening for fiscal nineteen.
Mm-hmm.
And then he'll be in consult with, uh, you know, our legislative representatives in terms of what, uh, you know, is happening at the state level, and, you know, make his best estimates on those revenues. And those, again, um, all with the exception of the circuit breaker program, all of them are general fund receipts, so he's really responsible for making those estimates as part of the overall revenue picture for the town. The circuit breaker program is, uh, kind of a special program where those, that funding comes right into, uh, a, a, a separate fund that is controlled strictly by the school committee. But you're right, in terms of the dollar amounts, that, you know, an increase in chapter seventy-eight could be offset by lack in, lack of aid and other aid programs.
Are you aware of any proposed, uh, legislation that's been proposed to sort of, uh, not necessarily change the percentage reimbursement from the state, but reverse the order? Um, towns don't have the option of saying, "We're only gonna pay twenty percent this year," or twenty-three, or whatever. Uh, states appear to, if, if, when they say they're gonna pay seventy-five percent, if, if that were turned around to say, "Towns only have to pay twenty-five percent," then, um, that would make for a much more stable budgeting process, 'cause it would eliminate one of the variables that you have to deal with. And I'm just curious to know whether, um, any of our organizations has thought of presenting that kind of legislation.
No, it's an interesting idea. Uh, I have not heard of that. I think that the, you know, I guess from my understanding, what folks would say with respect to the amount of aid is that it is in fact subject to annual appropriation in all of these programs. So as a result, they can't provide the guarantees or the certainty. And so that's, that's kind of the dilemma, if you will. Um, and so that's why we deal with the uncertainty. But I have not heard of any proposals to do that. Because it in fact would require them to create that certainty that we're trying to eliminate, and not sure that they could do that. Interesting concept, though.
My, my two cents on it is that towns, uh, dealing with much smaller budgets, uh, are, uh, affected more severely by volatility than, than would the larger bank of the state.
I could actually just chime in on that, and just, you know, it's an interesting idea, but as has been referenced, it, it's a question of who would be responsible for dealing with the volatility. Right now, it's on us. It would, obviously, I think the administration would probably balk at the Commonwealth having to deal with the volatility, but the ironic fact here is that a lot of these mandates come from the federal government, which of course can deficit spend. Both cities and towns and the Commonwealth have to balance their budgets at the end of each year. Neither the city, neither cities nor towns nor the Commonwealth can deficit spend. So neither is interested in volatility. And so it's kind of a pa, it would be kind of a passing of the buck between the two, when the original source of the mandate could conceivably bear any costs that they chose to do.
So, interesting idea, but I-
If you accept deficit spending, it's a good idea.
Lindsey?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I understand and sort of for the community to understand, 'cause there's lots of press at this point in time about chapter seventy and chapter seventy going up, and that feels like a feel-good story a little bit, but, um, but what I see, and I'm looking at a, a couple of your slides around like fourteen and fifteen, you had the one that showed relatively a flat line of, um, uh, state aid and, uh, and escalating costs at the local level. Yeah, if you go that one, right? So that, but your next slide, I just don't want the community to, to miss this, partially because of the scale, right? We got only three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there, and we appreciate every single dollar, uh, that we, that, that the legislature can, can throw our way. But even at the, this more, um, optimistic projections that we're now thinking are coming out of the Senate and the House, we're talking about less than two percent increase, if I've done my math right, between nineteen and twenty. And so, um, I don't want anyone to be confused and think that there's, that there's a miracle happening in there. Uh, and that it's relatively, like, like has been said, some of these other programs could offset all of the potential gains, um, in, in those figures. But am I right about, about that? That it's-
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think, you know, the, uh, the point that I tried to bring out, and I'll just show again, is the, uh, the minimum aid, the second bullet point, that shows that our minimum aid right now that we expect to receive is thirty dollars per pupil. So that the increase in chapter seventy-eight of a hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars, uh, what that reflects on our overall fiscal twenty budget, sixty-six point three million dollars, what that is, is one quarter of one percent of that budget. So very small, uh, amount. Um, you know, chapter seventy-eight, in terms of the overall budget being over twenty million dollars, it's about a seventy-thirty split. It's an important revenue source, but the annual increase is very small.
Thank you.
So thanks for bringing that to the fore again.
I think one of the success stories that is in this report is the continuous decline in the charter school enrollments. I know we've talked about that year over year, but you go back to, to FY, was it eleven? Uh, we're at a hundred and forty-four, and we sit at twenty-eight today. I think that's remarkable, to be honest with you. I think, uh, it represents a significant, uh, cost savings to the town, and it speaks to the consistent quality of the curriculum in Shrewsbury, so.
I can chime in on that one. If we were Worcester, we would have between five and six hundred students going to charter school. So the, the advantage we enjoy here, uh, with regard to that expense is substantial.
Yep. It is a very good news story, and I think, you know, when we look at the data, that the, of those twenty-eight, the, certainly the vast majority of those are in grades nine through twelve, so, as they progress out, that we're, we're hopeful that that twenty-eight will continue to decline.
I think it's twenty-three hundred students.
Yes. And I agree with John, when you talk about charter schools, I think, you know, we have, parents have options, and, and that's a good thing. But I think seeing a decrease in number for us is helpful for the budget, and I think it's a testament to the, the strength of our academic program here. So I think that, you know, you can see it both ways. Um, we talk about, when we're looking at flat, basically flat state aid and increasing costs to the town, I think that's a story we have to talk about every year, because it costs more to provide education, and I think we're doing a better job in our budgeting discussions about why it costs, what it costs, and what the goals are and what we need to meet those goals. So I think our story is better this year and more refined. And like Pat said, there's a lot of uncertainty, we never know where things are going, but I think, um, a thank you to you, because you do a great job at that forecasting piece, and kind of looking at where are we gonna land, and you kind of hit it every time. So I think we're very fortunate for the skill that you bring to our budgeting process, so thank you.
Thanks.
Doctor?
Thank you. I'll second that. We're very, uh, extremely fortunate, and Mr. Collins, in the role that he's in, uh, doing forecasting and understanding the intricacies of the budgeting process, both with state and local funds. Um, I, I do think, and to Ms. Heffernan's point, uh, you know, there, there's a lot of, uh, play in the media, and has been, I think there will be probably in the coming months, about, uh, you know, a solution to improve the chapter seventy formula at the state level. Uh, and it's much needed, and, you know, certainly the Superintendent Association supports a, a major reform, I do personally. Um, and that will benefit a lot of school districts and, and thousands upon thousands of students around the state. Most of those students will be in communities that are unlike Shrewsbury, in that they'll be low socioeconomic status communities, uh, where they, they are in desperate need of, of better support, because the formula's just not working. Um, what people, uh, need to know is that because of some changes in the formula, going back, I think it was two thousand and seven, uh, where the state did institute a factor relative to local property wealth and local income wealth, um, it was determined that Shrewsbury was, was already getting, so to speak, more than its fair share of state aid in chapter seventy, given, uh, its, uh, socioeconomic status, and that the formula has purposely been holding that number flat as we move towards more of an equilibrium as far as the state, uh, sees. Interestingly, what also has compounded that issue, uh, is that over that, the last decade or so, uh, from what was once, for that hypothetical calculation, where the state, I think when I first became superintendent a decade ago, was roughly expecting a seventy-thirty split, thirty percent paid by the state towards that hypothetical piece, and seventy percent by the, uh, by the town. Because Shrewsbury's become more affluent over that period of time, it's now closer to expecting an eighty-twenty split. Um, so even, uh, you know, if there is a huge infusion of dollars at the state level, um, I do not expect that tho, those dollars will be flowing to Shrewsbury in the form of chapter seventy dollars, and I think that, you know, any additional costs over time, we're gonna have to continue to look at what we're doing, uh, locally or with other funding sources. And as was pointed out, some of these, uh, Dr. McGee pointed out, some of these other pieces, I'm very appreciative of Representative Kane's, uh, uh, strong lobbying for the, uh, reimbursement on the non-resident vocational transportation, uh, circuit breaker, both Representative Kane and Senator Moore have always been very supportive of trying to fully fund that. Um, and, and if that were to take a significant hit at some point in the future, um, that would have, uh, probably more of an impact on us than what happens year to year in chapter seventy. Uh, but I thank Mr. Collins for his report, and, uh, again, his, his ongoing work to make sure that we are, uh, fiscally understanding where we're going, and we, so we can make wise decisions about where, where to invest and where we have to be, uh, thoughtful about that. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, under new business, we will talk about the appointment of Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Well-Being as part of the background for this vote. At our February twenty-seventh meeting, Dr. Sori presented a proposed agreement between the school district and the Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union that would fund a new district leadership position, titled Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Well-Being. At the meeting on April tenth, we voted to establish the position, we approved the job description, and we approved the memorandum of understanding with Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union that would provide the funding for the position. Under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Fifty-Nine, an appointment of an individual to an assistant superintendent position is by the vote of the school committee on a candidate recommended by the superintendent. I'll turn it over to Dr. Sori for that recommendation.
Thank you. Uh, in the, uh, school committee, you've received the memorandum from me dated today, uh, where I, uh, recommend, uh, that you vote to appoint Dr. Jane O'Lezot as the Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Well-Being, effective July first, two thousand and nineteen. Um, to give some background on, uh, where this recommendation, uh, comes from, uh, after you approved the position, uh, we posted, uh, the position, and we, uh, were, uh, began the process we typically would, uh, do. We posted internally, uh, because, uh, as we believe strongly that, we wanted to initially look for someone who had a deep understanding of the Shrewsbury Public Schools' culture, as well as the Shrewsbury community, and strong ties. Um, Dr. Lezot was the sole internal applicant, um, and so in keeping with long-established practice, uh, her candidacy was vetted in, in the following ways. Um, first, her application materials and qualifications, her licensure status were all reviewed by Ms. Malone as the Director of Human Resources, then by myself. Uh, Dr. Lezot then participated in a formal interview with a seventeen-member panel with representatives from various stakeholders, including parents, teachers, paraprofessionals, principals, central office administrators, uh, as well as local businessperson. Uh, there's a list of the interview team members in the, in the memorandum. Uh, she then met, uh, and, and interviewed, uh, a variety of times in sort of an unscripted forum-style interview, uh, that included meeting with the district faculty advisory committee, which includes teachers from each of the buildings across the district, as well as the district paraprofessional advisory committee, same where they have paraprofessional representatives from each of our schools. Uh, this also included officers from both the Teachers Association, the Shrewsbury Education Association, and the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association. Um, she also met with our PTO president's, uh, parent leaders group, um, and, uh, met with our district leadership team, which includes all of our different supervisory and, and curriculum leadership positions, from principals, assistant principals, department directors, and curriculum leaders, as well as central office administrators. Um, and then, uh, as you know, she met with you, uh, again, for more of an unscripted, uh, type of interview. Um, in terms of, uh, the feedback that came from those various interviews was extremely positive. Uh, the debrief with the, after the formal interview, uh, indicated that there was strong, uh, consensus that, uh, her qualifications and, uh, were, were excellent fit for this position. Uh, that also included four individuals who'd be with direct reports to this position. Um, of the eighteen teacher reps on the faculty advisory council, uh, fifteen rated her as very favorable, three favorable. All six paraprofessionals present gave her a very favorable rating. Um, all eight of the parent leaders with whom she met gave a very favorable rating. Uh, and of the, uh, twenty-nine district leaders, twenty-six of them, uh, rated her very favorable, and two as favorable. Um, so, um, it is, uh, unusual in my experience that a candidate will go through the process of multiple interviews without having at least some neutral or unfavorable responses, and that was not the case, uh, with Dr. Lezot. The memorandum you've received, uh, indeed, uh, includes some, uh, quotations of some representatives' comments that were made on each of, on the, uh, the feedback forms that we received, um, and, uh, therefore, just to underscore the level of support that that exists. Um, so, uh, given that process, uh, given my knowledge of Dr. Lezot's work, uh, for the following reasons, I'm making this recommendation. Uh, first, Dr. Lezot has served Shrewsbury Public Schools, uh, certainly with great distinction as, as a teacher and assistant principal, principal at both the elementary and the middle school levels for twenty-three years. Uh, so she has a deep knowledge of the district's culture. Um, in my estimation, and the feedback shows that she's been particularly effective at building a positive culture among students and parents and staff, um, and that's been particular attention to the health and well-being of all. Um, in recent years, she's also been a leader at the district level with regard to our social and emotional learning initiative, as well as training staff in mindfulness-based stress reduction, which was a, an initiative she began. Um, she has a strong track record of creating partnerships with businesses and individuals to provide engaging learning experiences for her students at Sherwood. Um, she, uh, you recall, we're talking about the new Beale, but not too long ago, we were working hard to get a new Sherwood Middle School building passed. Um, her leadership, uh, in terms of convincing the public for the need for that building, um, and gaining approval for, and then her leadership of the overall project, all the way from design to the opening, demonstrated her ability to successfully lead a major project from concept to implementation. Uh, Dr. Lezot also, in terms of the community connections, was raised in Shrewsbury, she's an alumna of Shrewsbury High School, um, she's a longtime resident of Shrewsbury, um, so the relationship she's built, uh, both as a school leader, as well as in her community leadership, uh, will be particularly, I think, instrumental in being successful in this role. That includes her, uh, founding and leadership of the very highly successful Turkey Trot for the Memory event that happens each Thanksgiving, um, and raises money for the Alzheimer's Foundation. Um, and, uh, since this position will also be expected to build a strong alumni network, uh, her being alumna, I think, is also, uh, a, a very positive, uh, element of her candidacy. Um, her commitment to, uh, distributed leadership is well-known, uh, she researched that for her doctoral dissertation that she earned several years ago from Northeastern University. Um, I think that would be an excellent fit, because this is a position that we'll have to work through others across the district and the community, um, to achieve the goals that have been set. And then finally, uh, as I mentioned earlier, the hiring process itself produced a large amount of evidence that, um, she has extremely strong support from the various, uh, stakeholder groups, um, as, and, uh, from the leadership team itself. Um, she also provided four references, all from outside of the school district, who also specifically addressed her fit and suitability for this particular leadership role. Um, so, uh, for all those reasons, I enthusiastically recommend that you appoint Dr. Lezot, uh, this evening, uh, effective July first. Um, if you do, I will negotiate a contract with her under the typical guidelines that I have from the school committee, um, and we will, uh, have her begin that role, and then, of course, uh, if she accepts the position, uh, we'll begin working on replacing, uh, her as the Sherwood principal. And I, I would guess and know pretty much from comments during the process that there'll be mixed feelings at Sherwood, because she is a beloved principal there, uh, by her staff and her students and the parent community. Uh, but, uh, the, the good news is that, uh, if she is, uh, elevated to this district-level leadership position, she'll still be having a positive effect on Sherwood, as well as the other aid schools in our school district, and, uh, believe that, uh, again, she's an excellent candidate, uh, for this role, and, uh, I would, uh, respectfully ask for your support in voting to appoint her this evening.
Any comments or questions? Jason?
I just wanna say that I enthusiastically support the superintendent's recommendation. I think that Dr. Lezot is a perfect fit for this role. I'm thrilled that she put herself forward to be considered. I think that her experience with, in particular with regard to social-emotional learning, she has, uh, stood out as a leader on that topic in the district, and in introducing social-emotional learning at a deeper level. learning at a deeper level to how and what we teach our students. I think that she's distinguished herself for many years as the leader of Sherwood Middle School, where she's a respected leader, not just within that school community, but throughout the community. And then my last point would be, this new role has a significant relationship-building component to it, and this role will be one of the most visible representatives of the Shrewsbury Public Schools system after the superintendent and the school committee. And I can think of nobody who I think would do a better job of representing us and building strong, positive relationships throughout the community. So I am thrilled to support Dr. Lezot's appointment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Lindsey?
I would also like to enthusiastically support Dr. Lezot's appointment to this position. I think as a parent of somebody in the Sherwood schools, she will be missed and hard shoes to fill. But while I wasn't on this committee when we decided to approve this role, it's such an important and critical one for our future growth, both in the well-being and in the partnerships. And she demonstrates clear commitment to both of those. And the challenge of doing all of it will be for us to help manage, but for the growth of the district, I think she's a wonderful fit.
Excellent, thank you.
I to support this enthusiastically, and I think when I look back through the process, this is a role that we fully vetted. We went through a lot of discussion about the role, affordability, sustainability, all of those pieces were covered. We looked at how it ties into our goals and strategic priorities and what needs do we have in the district. And as businesses change or school districts change, we do have needs and new positions are created. And I think that was the fallout of what we have seen over this past few months. So again, I think it's a multi-faceted role. It's going to have a lot of strong connections throughout the community and beyond the community. And I personally would like to thank Dr. Lezot for participating in a very lengthy interview process. So anyone else? Pretty good. Good. Dr. Sawyer, anything further?
Nope.
Yep. Okay. May I have a motion to appoint Dr. Jane O'Lezot as recommended by the superintendent of schools for the position of Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Wellbeing?
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Now if I can find my place, we can move on. Okay, next we have approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. There are minutes from our regular meeting on May eighth of two thousand and nineteen, as well as the minutes from the candidate interview also held on May eighth, two thousand and nineteen. Are there any changes or corrections? There being none, we will have these marked as approved without objection by the committee. And we do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of collective bargaining with the Shrewsbury Education Association, and for the purpose of negotiations with non-represented staff where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. And we will return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second roll call, vote is required. Lindsey?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.